All right, ready? I hope so. Kelly yet, are you good?
I'm getting there. Go ahead with that.
Go ahead and start.
Yes.
I'm gonna call the meeting to order this evening. This is the March 22 meeting of the McHenry County Conservation District. I will ask everyone to stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under Adam, in its love, liberty and justice for all.
That introductory roll call, Megan.
Trusty Gaden.
Here.
Trusty Cook.
Here.
Trusty Thomas. Here. Trusty Dom. Trusty Penny.
Present. Here we have four trustees present, that's enough for a forum. We're legal to go. We don't need any remote participation, nobody's participating remotely. Conservation ethic, who'd like to read that? Ray, thank you.
Conservation ethic, goal number six, to foster a conservation ethic among McHenry County citizens, helping all of us regardless of the basis of our interest in nature, to develop a greater awareness of our role in and responsibility for the total community of life. A conservation ethic asks us to assume a moral duty to become educated about conservation issues and then to act upon that information. A conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of preserving the natural heritage of the county's open space. Goal number two, to acquire and maintain other wildland scenic areas and open spaces for conservation purposes and for educational and recreational use.
Thank you, reading the conservation stewardship pledge. Bill, would you do that one?
We pledge to make a difference by standing up for our water, wildlife and way of life in McHenry County. Quality of life in McHenry County is on healthy and sustainable natural resources, properly developed cities and towns, a strong economy and beautiful outdoor places to explore, discover and relax. Help to build a sustainable and vibrant local economy by providing a destination for outdoor recreation experiences.
I have a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll move, we adopt the agenda.
So has a motion, Ray has a second roll.
Trusty Thomas, yes. Trusty Gaden.
Yes.
Trusty Cook.
Yes.
Trusty Penny.
Yes, motion is, the agenda is approved, the agenda's been adopted. Okay, well then we have an introduction of a new team member, police officer Patrick Donahue. Elizabeth, are you going to do the honors or?
Well, I'm gonna turn it over to Laura King, Chief King is online and we have Patrick in the boardroom. Yes, I, can you guys hear me? I seem to be having a little trouble with my connection, you guys got me?
Oh, great.
Okay, fantastic, so I know Patrick is there with you tonight since he was on shift. We thought he would pop in and say hello in person. So for the most part, I would like Patrick to be able to introduce himself, but I would just like to say that we are so happy because with the onboarding of Patrick, we are finally up to full staff, which is a place that we have not been in about two and a half years. And so it's so exciting to be going into the summer of 2022 with a full team at the police department. So Patrick, I'm gonna turn it over to you, please introduce yourself.
Again, my name is Patrick Donahue. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the executive director and chief king for giving me this opportunity to continue to serve. Previous three years, I was with McHenry County Sheriff's Office, then I was with the Chicago Police Department for 21 years. So I'm excited to continue my law enforcement career in McHenry County and looking out that window right now says it all, it's, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. That's, that's great, so welcome. And then we have recognition of Eric Lindstrom, our Ranger One. Who's doing this area on that one?
I can cover it or carry, we're just, many team members are taking the plunge here to continue with the professional development and Eric took upon himself to be certified as a park and recreation professional. So we have multiple team members that have gone through this, this is the second one for the year with this certification, so congratulations to Eric and I don't know if he's with us to see me and I didn't see him, but again, appreciate, he's a ranger assistant. So what happened with, so park ranger one now changed everything here.
We challenged the staff to, you know, to look at professionally developing themselves and Eric stepped up and, and when I'll get it, it's not easy to guess. It's some studying off, off time and so he's got that certification. And there must be about 10 of us at the district that have. So what, who does the certification? It's through the National Park and Rec Association, NRPA does it. Okay.
Yeah, so there's standards that you have to adhere to and then once you obtain the certification, then you have to maintain continuing education units every two years, otherwise you lose your certification. So it's a commitment for professional development in all the areas that cross the entire organization, not just within your two areas.
Very good. Congratulations, Eric. He's not with us?
He's not.
All right, with that, I'll move on to trustee report, anybody have anything to report right now? Okay, move on to county board liaison.
So it's been really busy.
It's been really busy.
Stay muted.
Sorry. Okay. All right, try it again. At the county, we've had a lot going on. So as you know, your budget was approved unanimously last month. It wasn't even pulled for discussion, it just passed easily. So they know you're doing good work there. So a couple of things that are going on, Randall Road was awarded $8 million in a federal bill to continue expansion north from where they just ended at Acorn all the way up towards Three Lanes again. So they'll get started working on that soon. We passed a resolution giving $800,000 to a firm that's gonna develop low income housing in McHenry. So that'll be, it's much needed, how low income housing, the last time there was a study done, there was only three rental apartments available in the city of McHenry. So I think that's much needed and they're using, they're rehabbing existing structures and using a lot of green energy. Then what else, we are also in the middle of phase two of putting out requests for expression of interest to internet providers, so because we're expanding our broadband, high speed fiber around the west and the north of the county. And so that's going along. We're past a resolution for leasing body cameras for five years and they should be deployed by midsummer. They integrate with the cameras that are in the car, the dash cams, but right now the dash cams, because supply chain issues won't be until end of the year, but pretty soon everything will work together. I was very happy to be sitting with the conservation district at the environmental annual dinner and I brought my daughter and we had a great time talking on scale at the end. He was very, oh, he talked a lot, he was very personal and he talked to every single person. You kind of had to stop to talk and it was wonderful. All petitions have been submitted for anybody running for elective office, so you should know who is running in your districts now if you go to the first website. There, I talked to Pete Austin today, there have been 12 applications for the open seat of the board. And that.
Who does that call?
Today.
Okay.
Yeah. So I, I'm sure, I would say in the next couple of weeks, we'll start interviews. That's up to Chairman Bealer when we'll do it. Oh, emergency manhood, just so you guys know, is working hard to mitigate any threats about cyber attacks, you know, with the threats between Russia and Ukraine, they're being very diligent about that. Water resource department is working with other entities to develop the Illinois salt smart training and certification for parking lots and sidewalks. The zoning board of appeals will hear an application for a second utility scale park, farm, solar farm. So that'll be another large one, I don't have any more details about where it is or anything, but I just saw that on the notes today. And that's really about it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Maybe for your board or for our board, were there applications? For your board, there were 12. There were 12. And I knew there were more people interested in, you know, the ones they heard, there were that many.
We're good. All right, I don't have anything that I need to report at this time. So that brings us to public comments, Stephanie, either anybody from public wanting to speak?
No, there's not.
Okay, thank you. And that brings us to, Linda, you'd like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Starting with 12.1, approval of minutes of previous meetings, 12.1A, February 17, 2022, committee at the whole. 12.1B, February 22, 2022, regular monthly. 12.1C, January 13, 2022, regular meeting in secretary session. 12.2, acceptance of the treasurer's report. 12.2A, to 28, 2022. 12.3, resolution number 22-16, a resolution authorizing the executive director to execute a memorandum of understanding with open lands for mutual assistance on prescribed burns on properties owned and or managed by open lands within McHenry County. 12.4, resolution number 22-17. A resolution awarding a contract to the lowest responsible bidders as well as with Buffalo Nursery enrichment Illinois at 47. 12.4A, per hour, person per hour. Per hour, person per hour. Support pack, herbicide application. At $87.48 for herbicide application with ATV spray for cost not to exceed $5,000 for project number six. Parts road then and RES. Great Lakes LLC of Broadhead, Wisconsin for 54.50 per person per hour for back herbicide application and $75 for herbicide application with an ATV boom sprayer for the cost not to exceed $80,000 in project number one, fish blocking quarter. Project number two, all the gap wetland mitigation. Project number three, Goose Lake Eschers. Project number four, Elizabeth Lake Nature Preserve. Project number five, School Springs Wetland Litigation Bank and project number seven, Naperville. Bid number 0222, that, oh eight, that oh one. 12.5 authorization to prepare specifications and that bid for Prairie Trail Stormwater appears to be road and Bernard Miller Road, Ringwood, Illinois, bid number 0322, that oh nine, that oh six. 12.6 authorization to prepare specification and then bids for the Prairie Trail renovations, Route 122, McHome Lake Road, Perry, Illinois. Bid number 0322, that oh nine, that oh one. 12.7 authorization to prepare specifications and let bids for Prairie Trail Stormwater appears south of Bernard Mill Road, Ringwood, Illinois, bid number 0322, that oh nine, that oh two. Oh, that's it?
That's it.
That's it.
All right, real short. I'll say, Bill has a second, a roll call.
Trusty Hook?
Yes.
Trusty Gaden?
Yes.
Trusty Thomas? Yes. Trusty Penny?
Yes, motion is approved. Hey, bring this other board business, pool of bills. A month of February 2022. We don't have a treasurer here tonight, Ray would you like to work us through these?
Sure. Treasurers internal audit, 13.1A, treasurer's internal audit.
I have two.
You did?
I did.
I have two.
Okay.
A 661 Albertson's for $50.67 and I 7740 imports unlimited and I don't have the amount.
Thank you. Okay, so those are the two we have called, we'll refine.
13.1B, consideration to approve the payment to conserve SFS as indicated on the submission of Bill's pending report for the period ending February 2022.
This motion for a second.
Thanks, sir.
Linda, can I have a second on this one? Roll call.
Trusty Thomas? Yes. Trusty Gaden?
Yes.
Trusty Hook?
Yes.
Trusty Penny?
I'll abstain, motion carries three, in favor, more abstention. What do you say?
Motion. Motion, consideration to approve the payment of the balances bills as indicated on the submission of Bill's pending report for the month ending February 28, 2022.
Bill, would you like to second that?
I'll second.
Thank you, roll call.
Trusty Gaden?
Yes.
Trusty Hook? Yes. Trusty Thomas? Yes. Trusty Penny?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Okay, 13-2. The trust of purchase of Steve Streambank credits, School Springs Wetland and Stream Litigation Bank. Who was leading us through that one?
Well, I just want to, tonight, we moved, it could have been a consent agenda, but this is the first sale of our mitigation bank and I want to compliment and just give a shout out to our team, Life Preservation Natural Resources and finance accounting that are working through this specifically, Halens, Gabe Powers, Brad Woodson, Val Seiler and then Amy Diallo, who served on the review team here. So, and anything else from your team you want to add to this?
Well, it's been a long time coming, it feels good.
Did it go a lot as you thought it would?
No, the first time through, we just wanted to make sure we had all the paperwork in order and Val and other members of the team really worked hard on that. And we did get a surprise when we got a check dropped off here to, to the board meeting. So all, all good and we have a procedure down and we have several other organizations interested in purchasing credits, so hopefully we'll be sending some more your way soon.
How long do you think it'll take to sell them out?
Well, we, it's all small percentage this first year and we may very well sell all the rest of the stream credits and some of the wetland credits this year. So as you meet standards, you can sell more and more credits and we'll move along.
I see.
In that direction.
So approximately, what will the, what revenue will the sale of 327 million feet of stream credits produce?
Just under 200,000 now.
And the team that was out there doing the restoration work, obviously, and I will forward on if I have not, there's a regular annual report that's provided to the Army Corps of Engineers, it's very comprehensive, it talks about the progress of the one team. Great job, I'll.
Very good, congratulations, that's, that's great. Do you have a question? Okay, so we need a motion to, I think you asked a check basically. They'll prove that, so the check's been sitting here a while, so I could have a motion to, oh, that's basically right. That's motion for a second, Ray has a second. Need more discussion? Roll call.
Trusty Gaden?
Yes.
Trusty Hook?
Yes.
Trusty Thomas? Yes. Trusty Penny?
Yes, motion carries and, thank you. Okay, the next resolution. For team three.
So we do have a presentation tonight on the hunting program, Gabe is with us, he is remote, he's on vacation, but he dialed in, but he pre-recorded his message of technology works for us. We're gonna give it a try here.
I'm gonna try and do it remotely here.
Gabe, it's up to you, I'm gonna try it one more time.
Okay.
I'm afraid we're gonna get beat down.
Well, at the end, we're gonna talk about technology, so this is exciting.
Isn't it great?
I looked at the material that was in the packet and certainly were a number of letters commending the program. It appears like satisfying.
So you're ready?
Yeah, go ahead, Gabe.
Okay, all right, so tonight, just wanted to do a quick discussion about the history of the program, where the program's been, how we got to where we are here today and then at the end, just have an opportunity for discussion on where the board would like to have this program go in the future and specifically addressing how we use technology from this point. Next one. So my next slide is gonna be a picture of some, some waterfall hunters. And if you're with me, two years ago, for the board presentation, I talked about the kid in footy pajamas and how they were pulled out of their bed and pulled out into this dark experience and they're cold and they really didn't want to go, but then sun came up and they heard the noises and smelled the smells and experienced all that, the, the outdoors provided and talked about how hunting isn't for everyone, but it certainly does plant the seeds of conservation in the hearts of, of some people. So that's kind of the benefit of the recreational aspect of the hunting program. Next slide talks about the hunting program, you saw this last year. In last year's presentation, I explained how the program analysis and the report is a static report, but all the different interactions that take place in order to provide you guys that, and a report each year. And all the different individuals and departments within the district that are responsible for bringing this program, implementing it each year. Next one. And then the actual value of the deer hunting program, you can see on the picture in the right, that is an exposure before district had a hunting program. You can see all those white flowers, those are shooting stars where the deer were not browsing them and they can see outside the exposure, there's one or two flowers. So this program has always the question of how much does it cost, what the benefit is? And two years ago, in the presentation, I provided this $5 per plant installed, that's the going rate for an actual plug, not a seed. And if you assume that there's one plant per square foot and you have the acreage figure there, you get up to $43,000 of vegetation per acre. And that comes out to $200,000 per acre minimum asset and if you multiply that by 10,000 acres and that's the amount that the hunting program has impact on, you're looking at a $2 billion asset. You could say, you could argue, yes, there's not one quality plant per square foot, but I would actually argue that that figure was probably low because of all the different ecological interactions that take place when you remove a species or a suite of species, their impacts are rippled across the entire ecosystem. And then if we're actually talking about species of special concern, that value of $5 goes up much higher because a lot of those species are irreplaceable. So for the actual cost of the asset protection, I think the $2 billion figure is fair. Excellent. So the next few slides here, I'm just gonna go over the history of the program, how we got to where we are today and all the different aspects of the changes specifically to the deer program and how we have used data to change the program over time. Excellent. Looks like I missed a slide there. Yeah, there we go. So the program started in 2001 and each one of these bars represents the number of sites hunted. And then for each column, the color is a different type of hunting that occurs. So from 2001 to 2004, we had the typical program expansion, started off small, hunted one site. The second year had archery, one month hunt and a firearm site. And then right around 2005, we started doing more deer management types of hunting. We brought in the deer reduction program for the first time and the deer reduction program was in the southeast part of the counties. The next slide, I'll go through the whole history of the southeast part of the county, but we had high deer population there and also high public use. So this was a new initiative for the district. You can also see in 2005, we did the first combination hunt. That was a trial year, we perfected it and you'll see it in later slides, we brought it back later. Another thing that happened in 2006 was we started bringing in the full season. We were beginning to have a meeting of herd goals, so actual population goals. And one thing that's been really enjoyable about my time with this program is just being able to change the program and move it around based on human dimensions, human dynamics and try and place our people where they're gonna be the most effective. So when we had a full month season, we went, excuse me, to, when we had a full season, we applied those where there's 40 deer, 40 deer per square mile. When there's a one month season, we applied those where there's 80 deer per square mile. And the reason with, with that is because the average hunter, human dynamics is they're only gonna take two deer. Once they have two deer, they're done for the season. So if you have a population that needs to be reduced, if you get additional hunters in there, there's a better chance of bringing that population down. Excellent. This is just a quick summary of the east side deer reduction hunt and how we changed it over time. In 2005, we started off with 14 days on three sites, those are Lions Prairie, Hickory Grove, Silver Creek. And 06 to 09, we had one site that was the end of October, Velcro and then three sites that were the first part of November, again Hickory Grove, Lions Prairie, Silver Creek. In 2010, we had four sites that were nine days and then we had Velcro, which was two and a half months. In 2011, we did one site, nine days, stick me run and then we had four sites that were two and a half months. You'll see that this is the only time that we did the two and a half months because that was not received well from the public because of the amount of public use that was lost down in those highly, highly popular sites. So you won't see two and a half months from there on out, it's mostly nine days. The exception is, starting in 2016, we went back to the two months and then last year, you might remember that we got rid of some of those nine days and went to full season where we could. And then we moved those areas that were not impacted by public trails from nine day to a full season. Excellent. 2009, 2013, we start hitting a cap in the program and our enforcement team said, hey, we're expanding too quickly. We need to have a certain number of zones. So they provide the program managers a level of zones that could be effectively monitored and enforced from a public safety perspective. So from here on out, you'll see a lot of modifications to the actual types of programs that are applied in landscape. The first trend you're gonna see is the firearm sites get reduced. So from 2009 to 2011, we go from five sites down to three and you'll see that the combo hunts start replacing them. So those areas where we could safely apply the combo program, again, as a reminder, the combo program is both archery and firearm. So it's a higher quality hunt. We had more of those sites take over. And then also you can see we changed some of the one month and two and a half months in archery fold. There's a lot of variation in these years as we move things around and try to see what the impact of the human dimensions were to our deer management. Next line. All right, 2014, we tried something very unique. We were seeing that we had the high demand, people were starting to not get into the program and we also took a look at the hours. And what you saw was there's a bias towards the beginning of the hunting season and the hours kind of slowly taper off, you can see that in the annual report. To this day, you have October hours, the peak in November and they fall off hard and a lot of that has to do with the decrease in daylight. The deer aren't as easily accessible, you have to hunt a little bit smarter. So what we did is in 2014, we took a look at that data and we split the season. So we had an early season group and then a late season group. So instead of a one. group. So instead of a one month, we went early season, late season, and what that did is it increased the hours throughout all months, October through January, but there was this perception that there was a loss in quality because that late season group were at the mercy of how the group before them hunted. So we didn't go back to that, even though the predicted results were what we wanted. There was this perception of quality, and we wanted to maintain a high quality hunt. So you'll see from 2014 on, we're going to increase our full season hunt because that was deemed the highest quality. In order to meet the demand, we started requiring, not requiring, but we'd provided preference to groups of three. That means that a group of three would get in before a group of two, and a group of two would get in before a group of one. So that's what you see in 2016, where we have the three preference, that's what that is referencing. The only other thing I'd mention in 2016, if you look at the right here, we have seven different types of deer hunting. Some of the feedback from our enforcement team was, hey, if you could boil this program down so it doesn't have as many variations, that'd be a whole lot easier for enforcement. So you'll see that become implemented in future years. Next slide. So 2017 to last year, you'll see our trend, we're trending up, providing the highest quality opportunities that we can. As we mentioned last year, we did that conversions, we got rid of all the late season opportunities and converted them to full season where we could. The only one that we couldn't convert to, from late season to full season, was Brookdale because of the trail. So that is, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but that's that one little bar on the far right. Everything else got trained, changed to full season, either combo or full season archery, other than the reduction hunt that we've mentioned previously. Next slide. The other thing that's occurring is our demand is increasing greatly. We have more and more applicants each year. You can see from this graph, from 2017 to last year, we've almost doubled the amount of applicants, and what that does is create not only demand, but also a lot, a lot of impact on us to manage the program, to manage the data specifically. Excellent. So with that, you probably saw this in the annual report, but the committee recommendations specific to the hunting program were to add two combo zones at the Kish corridor, and again, the combo is the archery and firearm, and that is a replacement of removing two zones at High Point. The reason we're moving those zones, even though there's demand, is because the committee has had a procedure that when we would allow calling, we wouldn't have deer hunting. And again, it goes back to that perception of quality. There's this antagonistic tension between calling and hunting, and we find it best just to remove that tension by having opportunities elsewhere. So we wanted to have the state go in there and do some calling because of the increase in prevalence at that site. And then we're also proposing to add three new archery zones, one at Boone Creek. Boone Creek would be just north of the state IDNR site at Galabriath. They have a public hunting program there, and we would just be on the north side of that. The one at Pleasant Valley is in the southeast part of the site, away from the public trails, the public trails are north and central, this would be in the southeast corner, and one at Alden Gap on Ferris Road. The other recommendation from the committee is to eliminate the cap on group size. So previously, I mentioned that we had the preference for three partners, and with that, we had a cap, you could only have up to three adult partners. If you had it, if you had three adult, excuse me, three youth, you could go up to six, but a maximum three adult partners. And some of the feedback you may have seen in the questionnaires was to eliminate that cap specifically for families. We had a couple of families that said, hey, grandpa wants to hunt, but he's only going to hunt two days, or we have a college kid, they want to hunt, but they're only going to hunt one week. Is there a way to eliminate this cap? And with the demand that we're having, we thought this would be a good idea to eliminate this cap so we have more group size because otherwise, what would happen is you'd have to split these families, and then you'd have two groups that would be taking up the zone. So instead of us mandating this cap, we decided that it would be best for the groups to self-regulate. They know what the zones are ahead of time, and they're going to be more familiar with the aspects of their group than we are. So that's why we are recommending that elimination. The one caveat to that would be, we would not provide any more preference for partners. So you'd still have that three max for partner preference. What we didn't want to have start happening is people manipulating in our system just to get a spot and have all sorts of people come in that wouldn't hunt. So three people would be the max, but they could have as many people as they want. And then we also are recommending an increase in the archery combo zone fees of $100. And what that means is, if I'm a group of three residents, it would be an increase of $33 for a resident and $66 for a non-resident because non-residents pay double. The last time that we had a archery fee modification was in 2006, for reference. So as we just discussed, the quality of the program has increased over time, and we would like to capture some of those quality increases, but also looking towards future investment in technology. Next. The data management of the hunting program over time has been, in 2004, you can see, we went from paper to the first access database. In 2011, the program moved from administration to LPNR. In 2014, we brought in our first online application. Previous to that point, it was all done by paper. The second version of access database was in 2014. We switched, the district switched, it wasn't just the hunting program, the district switched from active net to, excuse me, active tech to active net in 2016. We also had the GIS upgrade there. In 2019, this is, this is a big one, we moved away from paper sign-in. From 2001 to 2019, we used boxes, and there was paper in the boxes, and there was wasps in the boxes, and there was mice in the boxes. It was, it was a mess. Some of our data sheets, we know that they were missing. You'd see a trend in data go up all the way through October, right in the prime time, all of a sudden, none of the hunters hunt. That's clearly a loss in the sheet there. So our data management improved greatly in 2019. In 2020, one last thing about 2019, we did this Woo-Foo system, which was online forms that Stephanie set up, and we believe in shooting bullets before cannonballs, that's a Jim Collins thing, so just, just trying to figure out where we're going with technology so that Woo-Foo was really a bullet, no pun intended, with the hunting program. But in 2020, we invested, the foundation invested $10,000 in this hunt mccd.org website, and what that is, is a mobile-friendly website. The customer experience moving from paper to Woo-Foo was good because the hunters also didn't like paper, but the Woo-Foo forums was complicated. Moving to the hunt mcc.org site, we increased the customer experience, all of their data management is within their own login. Previously, they had to check in in one website and then check out in another, but this centralized everything for them. So that investment was specifically for the customer experience. Next slide. This is a little bit of foreshadowing. I mentioned the previous slide, the GS upgrades. GIS has improved their dashboarding, and so the LPNR department will be moving to a GIS spatial dashboard for the board and executive leadership team to visualize all the spatial management that occurs. So previously, you heard me talking about sites, and I put together all those graphs, but this one in particular, this is just a screenshot, but at some point, the board will be able to interact in this, interact with this dashboard. In the central, you can see the map, you guys could zoom in and out to those sites and see exactly where the hunting program is, where it's not, where different types of hunting is, and you can see on the pie chart in the top left there. Previously, I was talking about sites, but those were the actual zones. So you can see where the zones are on the landscape. So although we have 18 full season sites, what that equates to is the 54 full season deer archery zones. Next. Oh, one last thing about this one, the 9,400 acres, I rounded up to 10,000. So if you go back to that, that $2 billion figure, that's where I, I got that from, was this dashboard. So the committee, we discussed our data management, our costs, staff costs are increasing annually, like I mentioned previously, our hours have doubled since the zone cap. Actually, I didn't mention that. Our applications doubled since 2017, I showed you that, but our hours, the actual hunting hours, because of all the different modifications that we've done with the program, even though we've been at the cap, our hunting hours have doubled since 2009. So we're applying people to the landscape in a way that we're getting more hunter effort, and we're also capturing their inputs better. So we're managing twice as much data than we have since 2009. So the committee's recommendation was to invest in data management technology, and specifically, an additional investment in the mobile-friendly website, not for the customer, but for the staff, so that we would have a police dashboard, and what a police dashboard would provide is, an officer would be able to come in on any day, and they would get, similar to the type of dashboard that you just saw, what an output, a daily output of where the hunters are, hunting at the time where the harvests are occurring, and then they could plan their enforcement, their checks based on current data. Currently, what they have to do is they have to go in and take a look at each customer, where they don't actually have an output. So it would be an increase in quality for the enforcement team, and then it'd also remove all the manual processes for LPNR, specifically our GIS analyst. As you may recall, we removed some staffing levels at LPNR, we don't have as much data management, so I would like to remove some of these hours of manually moving data around from our GIS analysts. After the discussion from the committee recommendation, we evaluated potential other options, again, going back to that concept of shooting bullets before cannonballs. This program is at a point where we could invest in a cannonball if the board saw fit. When this technology movement happened about eight years ago, my vision was this program needs an app, is an application, can be done on the phone, and you probably have seen the hunters' comments, they said, this is great, it'd be better if it wasn't that. And that's where we do need to go eventually, if the timing may not be now, but we could investigate other options, including app creation. The GIS analyst told me that GIS survey 123 could be an option, or possibly a GIS native app. So I just wanted to have a conversation with the board to see what, what their feelings were, whether we should invest in additional staff time to evaluate our technology, if we should go with the committee recommendation for the additional investment at hunt mcc.org, that I did get a quote on it, it was $15,000, or if we should go towards app creation, which may be the best, and we may be timed to shoot that cannonball. Excellent. So with that, I'd really appreciate the board's time. Again, this, this program has been great to manage. I really enjoy seeing new people, new generations coming out and joining the natural resources. I've been able to be involved in non-hunters, meeting hunters, and finding common ground, and tearing down walls that previously existed. And with that, I would just open it up for discussion on the app, but also recommendations for next year's program, which was the first set of recommendations on those.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Do you have a question?
You've got a quote for?
Do you have any kind of ballpark figure?
I can't hear him.
So, can you hear me?
Yep, got you.
So you got a quote for 15K to, for hunt mccd.com upgrade, did you get any sort of quote for what it would cost to do an ass for, you know, with everything that you want in it?
Previously, the ballpark was around 50,000. I did not go out for quotes. I figured that it'd be better to have this discussion. My expectation after this discussion is, is the board will say, hey, let's, let's look at these different avenues, and then we would come back and look at a more detailed analysis of what each option would cost. But 50,000 is my idea of a ballpark that is not grounded. Cindy may know better.
So what you're looking for is, for the board of trustees to just say, yeah, go out and do the investigation on these three options, and then report back to have some more discussion on that, before you wanted to go with this?
Essentially, I think there's a step before that, is, is should we continue to invest, invest in technology? That would be the first one. If yes, okay, then should we go back and, and do a thorough analysis, so invest staff time in, in all of these options, or should we go with the hunt mccd.org option? But the first one is, should we continue this investment in technology?
I'm not sure I have anything intelligent to say because I'm not a hunter, and I, and I don't understand exactly types of data that you, you need to run the program. The foundation made a donation for this mccd.org program. You've been using it for how long?
Two seasons.
And do you find that it is inadequate?
The, the district's website is adequate for the customer. So the customer, their experience increased, that, that functioned well. So the foundation invested in that program, and that works well for the customer. It doesn't work well for administration, the districts, us internally.
So what you need is something to piggyback on top of that, or, or is it, you know, you sort of want to start from zero and develop an application or technology that serves both the customer and the staff?
Correct. Yes, that's, yes, right now, what we're doing, so there is a technology option out there that the district staff does not need to manually move data back and forth each year. So, so the one-time investment of building the system would provide savings over time. So there's two, this, I don't want to say there's two routes, there's two routes that I'm currently biased towards, and that would be the app and the hunt mcc.org, but I have yet to invest additional staff resources, our resources, in evaluating all those other options that were laid out previously.
Does that make sense?
Staff time, are you hoping to cut back? I mean, how many dollars are we hoping to save through, through staff time?
The LPNR side is probably around 80 hours annually. I do not know, maybe Laura could help out with what the enforcement would be. I, I don't know what the officers are doing currently, and how much time they're spending going through each line. I just heard their feedback on what the vision would be. So if we're going to change something, we would want to have that program not just do what LPNR needs, but the entire district business. If you're going to change something, you should change everything. It's going to be cheaper to do it at the, at one time. Does that make sense?
Yes. So I think what the board would look for is, is what Yes. So I think what the board would look for is, is what, what do you think the savings would be, what the cost would be and what, you know, what the annual savings and the annual costs would be um going forward. If we could have something in that kind of uh just to get us started, then we could like go from there.
Well, so this is Laura. So I would say from the police side of things, um, that, that answer really truly depends. So what this app is, is going to do is not so much uh save us time. It's going to improve the functionality of our ability uh to monitor the program proactively to ensure the safety and the compliance of all the participants. And so it's really difficult to mani- uh, to, to put place value, right, on, on safety. And I know you're looking at like, well, how many, how many hours? So what I would say is it's going to save the police department between five thousand and ten thousand dollars a year and manpower hours uh by streamlining, streamline lining and improving our efforts uh to be able to integrate with the program in a smarter way. And when we work smarter uh instead of harder, you know, we don't waste our times uh doing things that uh the long way, right? Instead, we, we kind of take the, the fast and efficient route. And so uh you guys all know me, right? I, I too hold a ba- bias. I want to work smarter and not harder. And I am fully supportive of leveraging technology to help us. And I think that's especially important in this day and age when um, you know, our, our workforces are, are stressed. And we, you know, just had this big conversation about uh how do we value employees? And I think that giving them the tools that they need to do their job so that it can be an efficient operation instead of a labor intensive operation, that type, that adds value not only to the management of this program, but also to, to the totality uh of the different tasks that our police officers are involved in. So from a police perspective, I definitely would be um supportive of either investment. Like Gabe said, the investment in MCC dot org is a next natural step forward. The investment in the app is kind of, you know, moving to the big solution at the end of the road. So, you know, do we, do we want to enjoy the ride or do we just want to get to where we're going? I think is, is really um, you know, what, what the board has to consider.
Gabe, do you have anything else to add to that?
That was a good summary.
Is the board's consensus that we've let them at least investigate and get back, report back to us? Is that what you're hoping for is just a consensus right now to um forward and?
Yeah, definitely. I don't, I don't want to waste taxpayer funds doing something that the, the board wouldn't ultimately at least be interested in hearing. So I, I don't want to spend staff time going through all these evaluations, figuring out options and then saying, no, we don't really want to invest in technology. So, so if there is a consensus, yes, we should evaluate this. We think it's valuable to the program and the district. I, I think that would be step one.
I'm comfortable with that.
I, I think, you know, we, I don't think anytime that staff investigates something and gives us more facts to deal with it, it's never a waste of time. I mean, there might be a, you may come, we may come to the conclusion at the end that maybe isn't what you want, but um generally, we're, I think we're all open-minded and we want to, we want to hear what staff's uh best recommendation is. And, and uh, and you may not come to the same conclusion you think you're going to at this point in time either, even though you are a little biased. But um, you, you will, uh, I, I'm sure you'll treat this fairly and you'll come back to us with what we need to know. Had that conversation then.
Absolutely.
Right, very good. I, I um, so I think we're all in consensus there. So we have a, heading there that I changed in the subject. You have a question. So do you think that your numbers are being managed uh to where they need to be?
That's a big question. How long do we, how long do we have here? We're doing a, we're doing a great job. And, and specifically, if you take a look, I hate to do comparison because I think what we'd have is, is the best. But if you look at what the cost of agencies around us are inputting for managing deer and specifically protecting that capital asset, excuse me, that natural asset. I, I think we're doing a good job. Are there areas that we would like to harvest more deer? Absolutely. Are there areas that uh we are doing a fantastic job? Absolutely. But it's, it's an ebb and flow. They're constantly mu- moving. Anytime that there's refugia on the landscape specifically, we, we see those deer just suck into those locations very quickly. Refugia being no, no impact from hunting or human influence. That's a quick answer.
Okay, that's, I, I just was wondering if you had a baseline and where you had some idea where you're at, where you're going and, and if, if program is uh uh getting us where we want to be.
I, I would think so, specifically when we talk to our botanists who have seen these species recover over time.
Well, as a farmer, I can tell you it impacts me also. The, your dollars are probably not uh, didn't look like you're taking into uh consideration what, what damage I see coming out of district property that I order. If, if it's, if the population isn't managed properly.
Has, has that improved based on your assessment?
Uh, yeah, when I'm farming, I've seen a way I think an adequate number of deer, but not as overpopulated as the ones was.
Good to hear.
That's what I'm saying. Anyone else have any questions?
I, I do, I do need direction on those previous recommendation, not the data recommendations, but the actual zones. Because we're, I'm going to be sending the board the directive next month. So, so if the board is in favor of those previous recommendations, you will see them in the April directives. That was the, the modifications, Kish Corridor, High Point, Bloom Creek, Alden Gap, Pleasant Vale.
Is that part of a resolution here or not?
Well, tonight you're accepting the report, which is a look back.
But it's not.
It's not the directive.
It was just a consensus on the I haven't, does anybody have any, any difficulty with what we're also asking for?
I certainly don't. In other words, uh, I, I think, Gabe, you and your team are the experts in this. So uh, this is, but what, the way you read the numbers and the direction you think you should tweak the program as far as access and hours and the types of hunts. No, I think um I would support your recommendation.
True, and that's, I think, is everybody's good reader recommendations and look forward to your, you know, next month with any feedback you have. Are you getting many? Are you getting much pushback from the public in very many places or just a few?
Well, twenty twenty was an odd year. Uh, you probably saw in those hours, twenty twenty was off the charts. And it wasn't just off the charts for, for hunters. We had more public in the zones than we ever have had previously. And that, that continued again in twenty twenty-one, but not to the extent that it was in twenty twenty. The officers are very busy dealing with uh public and hunter interactions, but I think it, it helped quite a bit just, just changing a lot of those zones from, from where the public has open space it, in having hunting on the periphery. So really demarcating, this is the public open space and this is where the hunting occurs. Uh, that has been a, a, a big program change that we went from in twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one and it seemed to have helped. That's only one, one year of observation though.
All right. I, I think everyone's on board with your recommendations and would like to see that move forward. I'm not seeing anybody with a negative view at that point.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the effort on this. It, I think it's a great program. With that, if there's no more questions, I would entertain a mo- somebody to make motion for a resolution number twenty-two dash nineteen. A resolution accepting the two thousand twenty-one hunting report and consensus to support the recommendation for the two thousand twenty-two hunting directives. Uh, do I have that motion? With that motion from Linda and Ray has a second, we'll call.
Yes.
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 Yes, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Gabe.
Thanks, Gabe.
Hope vacation's going well.
I found spring.
Very good. All right, that moves us to Hebrew and Greens. Just uh, who's going to lead that?
So I'll start and then we have Ed and Val here this evening and Val prepared some of the comments. And we met as a team uh based on where we last left with the uh intergovernmental agreement that was prepared and sent over to the Hebrew Grange District and never was executed. We took the opportunity to clarify a few other things that need to be placed in some of the recitals relative to communication, you know, protocols of how they would operate and then uh future funding, uh should that be necessary and how that process would work. Before we actually had legal review it, we basically, uh, and Val, you can speak, I think did a very nice job of capturing everything that had it prior and then looked at, um, get some feedback from the board here. And then we can meet with the Hebrew Grange District, get their feedback. And hopefully we can um discuss any issues that they have and then move forward to having an agreement next. So tonight, it's just to get your feedback on the recitals, any concerns?
So Val has something he's going to present or?
No, I mean, I'll just mention, we did this like five years ago originally. And then I was asked to look at it again and maybe update and buy some new thinking that has come into play since that time. And so the, the primary, um, not going through the document in my hands right now. But um, the primary things that we thought were relevant to mention at this time were, like Elizabeth mentioned, let's clear up the communication channels so that it makes clear that a phone call to whoever picks up the phone here really wasn't what we were looking for. We were looking for formal communication. So we just established that Elizabeth and then whoever on their side would be written. And so that there would be a, a good understanding of, of what each party was doing and expecting. The other primary um thing that we, we thought was relevant to, to mention was how we were handling uh assessments or fees related to uh activities in that, within that Grange District. You know, we have recently received a billing for an invoice for activities and, and, and worked on there. Uh, I think it's the first that we had ever encountered as, you know, from, from that Grange District. So um, we did a site in there uh a, you know, part of the statute from the Conservation District Act that, that says that the conservation district shall not be subject to special assessments from other means of government. Um, that's a position that, you know, may be debatable or has not been tested in, in, in law. But um, we thought it's relevant that to take a position that it's there, it reads, it's very plain. So uh, and so, but that's not to say that we weren't, we willing to work and be cooperative and, and, and you know, with regard to special assessments. And so there's also a mechanism that's been put in there where if there are activities where they are expecting some participation from the district that we can inform the goes, have a chance to review the plans, uh, including what the assessments would be. And then um approve them in advance um as a, as kind of a just an understanding that a voluntary agreement to participate on, on certain projects within the district without um making it a uh adversarial situation.
I think the drainage district may take into, may feel that they have the right to assess.
Oh, I, I agree.
So I think you're going to have quite the discussion on that. Because I think I
Oh, I think, oh, to say the least.
Because I think they're going to say the law is on their side to be able to do that. You're going to say that our, our, our thought is of we need to have a discussion. So if they feel that they have the right to assess anything within their district.
No, I, I, I'm sure that they would probably say that and maybe read it and say, and say that, you know. But so, so my, my thinking was, I mean, I was asked to put something together, got some input and say, well, this is, these are the elephants in the room here. This is what this says very clearly. So, but, but I think it, it could be, you know, we try to put a positive spin on it and say, this is what this says. But in light of that, despite that, it says that if you want us to work on something and if there's some beneficial, let's, let's, we'll pay for it. We'll pay for our share if it's a benefit to what we have. So we're trying to make it a, a positive way of, of looking at it and not saying, no, we won't pay assessments. We'll say, and then, then we don't have to get to that debate on whether we have to or not, hopefully.
And they may come up with their own wheresses based on the conservation, uh, the, the drainage district law. And the two are there and so we're not debating that. You know, I think it frames it to move forward, I guess, or something.
I think that they had a drainage, the state had a drainage district, or drainage meeting um a week or two ago. I think that they did bring this up to the state range, whatever the title of that organization is. I think they were researching, because I don't think they've had that discussion of how they're going to work with another government entity. So I think they're, they're looking at it from their side also. So I think we should have a big discussion, discussion from both sides.
Now, I would, I would add to this too, that it, it um, it identifies a methodology for the drainage commissioners to enter the property to do drainage inspections. And I think that was very important to them. So it's, it's qualified how they can do that, where they would park. And uh, it also goes into uh into the responsibilities of and, and benefits that both the drainage district and the conservation district has for our particular missions. So I think in, in the document, it tries to call the fact that there are drainage concerns, they have to be addressed and there are conservation concerns. I think all of us are really hoping that this is a, a good jumping off point. They have a, kind of a very ideal relationship to maybe to become a model.
I think we're heading in that direction. So there'll be more of them to work with. So I think that's good. Of course, each, each one will bring its own personalities, so there is that also.
That's what makes it so interesting.
Anyone else from the board here?
No, I think, you know, uh, it's difficult. It's, it may be to uh come to some type of agreement. It's important that an agreement be reached and that the, the uh proposal just not sit for five more years until some other uh issue that brings it to the fore. So yeah, I think the discussion should uh continue in a cooperative, positive way. And at some point, if we need legal representation, then, you know, we need to uh ensure we're properly represented.
So next steps, if this is good, then we'll just volley it over and we'll continue back on. The other drainage system is looking to have a meeting. And uh, when they're ready, we can send it over. Uh, they can take a look at it, get together, we can explain it, you know.
You're going to send us over now as it is, right?
If you have no changes, we'll send it and um, and then we have a meeting so we can kind of discuss.
Sounds good. Very good. Thank you. Thank you for the effort into that. I'm sure it will be a, a discussion going forward. All right, with that, we're going to move on to the executive director's report.
Okay, a few things here for everyone. We were down in Springfield for Park State. And it was great to be back in the Capitol with business as usual and the legislators were happy to see us back in play. It's very busy. Uh, just to give an overlook, the total number of bills IDPD was telling that there was nine thousand nine hundred and two bills that were introduced this legislative session, two thousand four hundred and forty-nine amendments to that. And at the time when we were down there, there was one thousand seven bills that were currently being tracked of interest and concern. So it was a really busy place. Um, so a lot that was going on down there during the conference. They had Dr. Kent Redfield, uh, who's Professor Emeritus in Political Science for University of Illinois. And he talked about just the general uh how politics really works and how it's changed. And of course, at that time, we were down there when a lot of big newspaper headlines were taking place. The themes of just the culture and the money and the structure and how all of this stuff is a systematic piece. and how all of this stuff is a systematic piece and kind of where we're going forward. And with all the reforms and all the activities that are taking place, thus are coming a lot of local efforts at a local level, which is is why one of the things that you're seeing with your economic statement of economic interest, the new change there that you updated, things that you need to disclose, et cetera, a little bit more of a deeper dive than you may have had in the past. So just a reminder to complete that, that did go out, there were some issues at the. It's it's up to date, yes, yes. You can do that. So that's one of the changes, but it was very interesting to to what has been going on and some of the changes down there. We also talked about cybersecurity and with our IT team, Stephanie at the lead and Andy, and then with Concentric, making sure that we're on top of all of the situation or concerns. And so Steph has placed out through the derma for us to put together a business continuity plan and incident response plan. So we did that during COVID, see how deep in different areas of operation, but now we're looking to see if in fact we were under a cybersecurity attack, what it's going to take. While systems go down and they have to come in and whether it be held at a ransomware or whether it's just we have a virus that's infiltrated our system, how do we operate if everybody can have access to their laptops and smartphones? So we're going through a critical eye and mapping that all out just to ensure that we've got the necessary protections. The investments that the district has made through moving to cloud-based systems like we did with our email server and other areas, that just adds another layer so that should something happen, we can get access to that data sooner. So it's really the items that are on our server locally in our facilities, and that's another discussion is is we need to make investments going forward, looking at cloud-based systems, even install our server material. That just is a way to mitigate some of that and and transfer that risk. So so that was talked about. The FAP four twenty vacation, we did draft a resolution, we attended last month to the county board, and then we will also be presenting on their resolution board, I shared that this afternoon, and anybody that's interested, on the thirtieth, it'll be in front of Transportation Committee and the County Board in April. That formal communication will then be sent on to Springfield and in support to assist us in having that transfer. Environmental defenders, the CAG is having, if anybody's interested, April twenty seventh is an invite for anyone that wants to attend, and then there are some dates that have not been assigned. So if we're interested in hosting one of the CAGs in the future, then it would be something that we might want to take an opportunity to do. The other piece I want to talk with you tonight was the letter for support for Bell Bull Prairie. The district has been approached several times via email to join the group that signed on to that letter. Familiar if you've read in the newspaper, the airport and Prairie that is on the Illinois winter natural areas inventory site is under threat. At this point, the district has not responded or signed on. My review of it, that it's there, there are no other governmental entities that have signed on it, and I go back and look at these things. I look at our threats and response to public notices procedure, and since this is not a county, unless the board directs it differently. And if something's looking to your feedback, it could not be something that would be, at this point, something for us to stare.
I think I'm comfortable with that, if it's not in our backyard or purview. Or that we should officially get involved.
There's a lot of organizations, alliances that are taking positions on this where there are members, and there's one on the sign-on list is is pretty significant. And we're aligned to those organizations as well. I think a lot of the government wants to probably find themselves.
Well, if we wanted to ask for airport people to start telling us what to do, then, in other words, if you open it, what's fair for one is fair for the others. So, I mean, I I might support Prairie Preservation as a private citizen, but I'm not sure that it's just my one of you that the districts should take an official position.
I I feel the same way. I personally do support it, but I don't know that we we should as the Henry County Conservation District.
I'm on board with that as well.
It was like, that's consensus in the board, that we, at this point in time, not not sign on with it.
Perfect, and that is, well, and then the last piece, I will say, Conservation Congress saved the date. That is a board meeting. So we need everybody there. Registration is ongoing. Numbers are looking good. Everything's being finalized, and it's just a couple minutes.
The date is?
So April sixth, five P M, by the Henry County Council. And thank you, President Henning, and Vice President Cook, he participated in our planning group meetings and. Is there something that's going to be given to all board members or would you like? That would be great. I can prepare something for you just to remind everybody to sign up. Chairman Bueller is also going to be making open remarks. And to talk about that, too. So, yes, I will prepare something.
Okay, thank you. Many assignments and reports for Fox River. Do we have anybody attending that this time? Kishwaki.
Yes, so we met March fourth. The main presentation this month was regarding gas and oil lines that run through portions of the Henry County and specifically the Kish River corridor where I guess there have been a few weeks in the past and things like that, and they're working with one of the water preservation agencies that in Illinois to figure out whether we have any sort of action plan, if there were some type of rupture, leak, how that affects the water system. And that, you know, I guess a lot of the lines run through. There was one particular gentleman on the call ran through his property and said that, you know, he didn't even know that they had an easement through there and things like that. So it was a very informative meeting. But yeah, that's what the.
When you said they had leaks, did you mean they had leaks actually in the water? They just have a leak someplace else, and there's a concern that they may be in the water at some.
They they spoke about, they had specific leaks down towards like Romeo, Bill, Joliet area of the pipeline. But that same pipeline, you know, runs from.
Okay.
Up north, it hasn't, hasn't happened here yet.
Thank you. All right, Chicago waters.
The only update, our next meeting, Executive Council will be in April. Currently, we're reviewing branding communication firms to launch and promote the green vision. There have been several campaigns, very interesting on roads and variety of activities that are happening across the region. For those to take part, those programs are free and we're all done online, and then we'll continue city conservation. There's more programs left that series, and then that would be.
IACPD, IAPD, and RPA. From your, that's not your.
Yeah, I have no new information to report from those organizations.
Conservation Foundation, you were at their meeting. Elizabeth, Wendy and I didn't make it.
I can, I can tell you what.
Okay.
You can tell me what. I mean, they have, as you said, there was no consensus on the fourteen, so they did a meeting last night. They wanted to accept the financial audit for the year in June thirty of twenty twenty one, acceptance of the fiscal year twenty twenty one federal form nine ninety, and a new member, foundation member, Elise Livingston, got her application in. So the first two were accepted and and passed, and we're going to bring that that applicant applicant's name to us when, in April.
Sound very good.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No, I will also say Wendy Plummer and our marketing team, Caitlin and Maddie, were there to provide how our communications team is supporting and being seen more of the foundation. It's unfortunate that more members weren't present to hear it, but it was recorded, so they'll be able to watch it. But I think the strategy and seeing how our using networks and some potential of rebranding the foundation was discussed as as an opportunity, and hopefully by those efforts being very targeted, we'll continue to build that momentum of additional dollars being raised by the foundation and showing that the two organizations. And paddle paddle sail, June weekend before Father's Day, the eleventh.
I think it's the eleventh.
Father's Day is the nineteenth, so. I think it's the twelfth, it's the twelfth. Same weekend, but it's Sunday. Yours, it's the weekend before Father's Day, right? So that's coming up. Okay, I will not be in town. I think they're looking for sponsorship to help with that program, volunteers on the, yeah. That's, they're trying to move that, so it's more more than a brand racer.
Government's. Green Brinks.
Okay, I'll say about Green Brinks, is Green Brinks is being canceled for April because of the progress, so they're channeling all of that activity.
Okay, John, bicycle and pedestrian plan. There was no meetings, so no report. Okay, thank you. Naturally, in Henry County.
So we had a brand launch at the Dole Mansion. It was an amazing event. We had both from the state tourism. Senator Loax was president, Chairman Bueller, a lot of the current board members who could speak to that. It just, it was very exciting to see the momentum, the synergy of the three areas work together. The Destination Marketing Organization, we talked about before, the county of Henry, and then the Economic Development Corporation, and this ability that everybody working together, what sets us apart. We did a board meeting last week looking at what we need to be doing. If you've seen that Insider Guide, I should brought one up. They are available. Again, great promotional material to advertise whether it's to, if you're living here, what you can see and take part of. Outside the area, what you can visit from, and so that is being well received. And then we're looking at some next steps of what we need to do to, again, increase impressions. I will say that naturally Henry County is working as a partner with us for the Conservation Congress in taking the app they created with site destinations, so and then a challenge so that you'll be able to check into a conservation district area, visit a local restaurant or a business, and then get points and then be able to to go for a drive. So we're trying to connect that tourism component of the two of us working collaboratively, again, building the foundation as a way to go those business-to-business partnerships. Right there, those are them, yes, yes. They were really well. Haven't seen it. I'll, you've seen these, right? That's the guy.
Sorry, anybody else have any other outreach contacts this time to the report? Then we'll move on to public comments to Stephanie. Anyone out there that would like to comment?
No, there there is no one.
Okay, thank you. We have no executive session, so that I would take a motion to adjourn.
We'll make that motion.
There's a motion to adjourn, or a second. Ray has a second. A roll conference.
Yes, Trusty Thomas, yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries, and we are adjourned. Thanks. Thank you to everyone, and I'll put this meeting together.